...
However, because of the extensive subject matter offers that may be impacted by one signed into law, the portfolio committee saw the need to provinces to ensure that the proposed legislation is responsive to the needs of all stakeholders and rights.
Me kan chayala ba la horo ma la chomo onu o arona olali diin chatsiri insitata. Eh, komidiya reyapunela eh, hori eh, ere kamola chomo onu o utliyo ho ama eh, banale saabe barona ha ota horo namolao. Bayile tolo sa na koya di tetu patana sa zenu ele hori eh, ba ta ba hori eh, hoza karolo omohu zo ne se se ta ba tu sangho bana hori ame molao onu o eh, utleho fikhelela di chokoze banan le zo ne le horo ah, ha ota ho feleza oha ta ke la di chanele lo za bo ne.
On these public hearings, that is to engage directly with US stakeholders from differentiations and solicit your views and inputs on the bill. In this regard, whatever position it will be appreciated that you provide us with reasons and tell us whether the bill in its intended purposes.
Me eh, malibana le ma la chomo onu o waro narana le ma ika le ma ho lo amle lo naka chama lalo. Eh, ele hori eh, lule ba tchobapa tsa ra ka eh, ba akiba ba farlo ka ning, hoza ba tchobapa tsa mo me ka chong e farlo ka ruja ma iku to alo na kamola chomo onu o ro tse ro ho piye ne jana. Me luru bolele ne eh, ya ka halu ta bo lu bua hori eh, ama la chomo onu o gawo ne ho ne jano jana. Ta lo bon na utleho fikhelela ma iku.
Where you in aspects or clauses of the bill, we will need you to highlight those specific areas while also making proposals once as the portfolio committee when processing the bill.
Me hai le horo ho na li di pola lo na le ma tsu ye ho katzo ne ritleho ko pa horo ludhi cholo le ludhi buwe. Me luru bolele ne hori lo bonarere ka dira rabo la kamoha onu zaya faro na komidiya portfolio hara ta beretota ka di chalo zalona, reta ro ho ne ho za tiya di chalo zo li di tiri le, sa ho bana horo ma tsu ye ra alo na agara rabo lo ka zala enzija.
Objective on these public hearings is to gain an understanding and state of readiness moment in terms of capacity and resource availability in respect of responsibilities invested in the bill or conflict with existing legislation and regulatory frameworks. For example, proctor plans vis-à-vis the existing provincial spa-
na le sa te o sa za te mo tu o vis-à-vis eh, special planning hoza tu laha yo ya di sa. Eh, e chane to hori eh, te ngwe ti ri song. Me ho di ri sui molao o ele horo bizah hori ki molao o lao la ngurula ha ngoa ka di sa li ti ri so ya zona o bi diwa spluma.
We therefore in these public hearings will be taking oral submissions which we will identify. Those that wish to make oral submissions will be able to be identified and will request of them to sit in the middle chairs. And those that wish to make written submissions are welcome to bring them eh, to eh, the podium and will take that for consideration.
Ka ja lo hori eh, jano jana ritlo ho za la ka na na le na no la ro na la hori eh, jano eh, lokan sa di chalo zalona se di ta ben di buiwa kamulo mo me ritlo ho siu ba 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 ta ho din sa hara ba siu pile ba ta ba duzi moteng ka di tu lo se di mo bo hara njoa ho lo ya ro na. Ho na le ba o ba ba ka na ngba ra ta ho nsa se di kuadi lueng hai le horo ha ba ta ho bua o ba ta ho di kuala. Re ho ta le sa ho udi re jalo me udi kise fasera le fa no fa, reta ro ho ne ho di za tiya le zon ne.
Those that have been identified to make their oral submissions, we will request you to introduce yourself, name and surname. If you are representing a certain stakeholder or affiliation, you will then tell us the affiliation and then you will have four minutes to make your oral submission.
Me ba ba ta ben ba siu pile ba la ha ufi lo ho bua, reta ro ho lo ko pa horo luru ti so ro bolele li na la ha ho le sa fa ni obo ore bolele hori ah, o e me ze mo ka chong mongue hoza o e me ze monale saabe mongue me oba umaje ka ma yina hori ye bo ne bo mang, obo zu la ka di chato ba ta ho din sa le ho ri ti si hori ma la chomo onu o wa wa mo ka la hoza ka wa mo kele.
It's important therefore on speaking on the bill, you are able to clearly eh, state if you support the bill or if you object and reject the bill.
So, po chalo sa ka zala ukiwa lang senke, ho ne ka ma ba ka hai le hori ha oto uguakama la chomo onu o wa otehe ta ka ba ba ka afi hoza ka otehe ta kan ka ma ba ka afi.
I will therefore start on my left hand side. We will take eh, ten hands to be able eh, to kickstart the session. Then after eh, that we will take another group of hands on my right hand side.
Re ho si mo la jano ba hai so ki cloho ko pa ma zo ho ka fa mo le me onu o ho si ba 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 ta ho bua eh, re di re karolo yan cha memora ho hamo ki ta beki ta, ka fa mo je wame eh, ho ba ta ba 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 ta ho bua le bo ne reta ro ho ne ho zu la bill.
We are not rushing anywhere. We have come for these eh, public hearings as eh, our parliament of the republic is a people's parliament.
Ha re icha halalala ho pe ba hai so ri cloha no mo ho lo na mu di tetu zenu za patla la za ere ka parlamente ea republic ya ro na ele parlamente ya ba.
Being women's month, I will start eh, with women and identify eh, women eh, eh, as eh, a priority.
Ere ka ele pre diya basadi eh, ki cloho eteleza basadi kuapi le, inne bo ne ban ka ba ki ba ta ho ba siu ba.
Eh, we'll eh, take a hand here in the front eh, the lady with the black hat, please come forward.
I see you're willing so rolo so senso.
There's another lady with a black duke there, please come forward.
Eluena ba tuku enso.
There's a mayor with a black jacket or luchiling, please come forward.
And then, the one ka, ba ki enso with braids, re ko pa luena otle.
These all the women on the left hand side. Here's another one with a black jacket, please come forward.
Ame ki bo ne basadi buke ba, ho na li omohu ka pe wa ba ki enso luena oka ta.
Eh, guess eh, the other women are still warming up.
Abso ba ba basa ta ne ba ika kanya, ba ba basa di varna sa ta ne ba ika kanya.
Since we've seen eh, our women in the netball championships eh, they started with warming up exercises even in the Women's World Cup that we will be watching, the final this weekend eh, they start with warming up. So if there are no hands from women, we'll take hands from any man on the left hand side.
Ha ho sandama zo ho ape abasadi ra hoza aban na jano, ho ne ba sa sa ne ba o mapai ya ka re bo ne basadi ko netbolo ba simula ze, ba zam akabo nyamiko mo ra ho ba ba simula ba hotela jano mo mo ta me ko ngoa bo ne re ke bere bo re ti di final, mo ma felebeke ngano, ludhi re hala jana.
See a hand with a green cap at the back there, please come forward.
So rolo so sa ta la ko mo ra ho ra ho.
The gentleman with the brown jacket, please come forward.
Ya, luena ra esoka eh, brown jacket, ya.
Any other hands beside the gentleman with the black jacket, please.
Ko pa li lung ka pe le zo ho, ama o ka pe alinting.
Any other hands on the left hand side.
Aru bo ne ma zo ho ka fa mo le me?
I did say they are warming up, so we'll take hands on my right hand side.
Aru ba ta ka fa mo je?
Here's a hand here. Any other hand?
Ope fe la yo ba ta ho za le za le zo ho?
We'll have to excuse eh, the honourable mayor, councillor Tupane. He's got another appointment at eleven, so eh, please eh, be excused.
Eh, ma lo ho ta Tupane.
Who are you delegating from your office to remain? So that if there are any service delivery issues that emanate from the people of Mochale city, they can be addressed.
Mr. Endamase from your office is here.
Fa go, ya oza, talal gandai. Mr. Endamase will be taking responsibility of that. Can he come forward and sit here with us?
Eh, ma lo ho ta re Tupane ko pa hoza ma ba hai so ko pa tsuarelo, me ubi di zo horo ota lo ka la ma ngo ma imong ah ha re aru ota lo ka la eh, yo ngoa le lo ko la, kantoro ya ha re ho ra atla asala ah re di ze me ho bana hori di chale ta na di fe ka ma ta ta alo ka be liwa ansi ze hai ne akaba se.
Zubon Damase here.
And then eh, ra te Damase, oting ke no o ta be ngasa ze mo le ka tu la ha, oting re Damase.
We don't see him. Please eh, ask him to come and sit forward because we want him to take responsibility of any matters that will be raised on service delivery.
Ma lo ho ta ba ho mo ko pa horo ah, ta ka ho na ra ba ta ho ra ngoa, ta ho si ka ra ma ika ra belo ah di chalo di pe fe la, se di amanang li di tiri lo, se yo ma tsu ye ra ka ki lo ho na tinga zon ne.
We may even have a situation where people contest some of the issues raised by the mayor. So eh, we want someone that will respond to those issues.
Ho kan na ha, di re ha horo ho ne le ba o ba ba nganga, kan diin chadimu ze, ra toro po ka bo ne eh, ele adin sa ka ja lo ra ta ra ta horo re ne le mongue, yo ta arabang di kan zeo.
Thank you, executive mayor.
Ra ho le bo ha eh, ra toro po le ma lo ho ta.
How many chairs we have? Two more hands.
Ra ba ta ma.
Mayor, please come forward.
Ho ama bi di abo fe lo.
The last hand, oh, there's a woman defeated by a woman will take you the next time around.
Ri le buke le ta ta.
As a mayor.
Afelitzi jano.
So I, I am truly excited with the people of Mochale city. The women are taking charge eh, on issues of land and agriculture. We see that it's a male dominated sector, but I'm very proud to see women taking lead here.
La in tumedi zalona basadi ba mo Mochale city ka bana hori ye basadi ba banzi toa ta ba elo hori ha ba ipone za ba ho ta ho bua ka ma ta ta azale fasera i zo hori, se no se ke se te se le horo ti ro mo ho so ne idu la ki buunzi ta ta ki ban na, me bo na fe la basadi ki ba o, basa za basia me ze ho bua, re le bo ha la so fe la ta ta.
Okay, for this first quarter, we will have eh, this session and then in the second quarter, I'll take hands on eh, my right hand side. Let us begin the session.
Aru si mo le ma hai.
Thank you. If we may please appeal to everyone to be as silent as you can and respect eh, all the speakers so that they can be able to be heard and they can be able to make their input. Because I did mention that we are live on Parliament TV and therefore we want to make sure everyone is adequately heard.
Ja ka ki talusi ze hori eh, remo Parliament TV, me ngarata hori ba tuwa le ba na le saabe, me ho thomisa horo mongue, o ho na hori diwa.
You may proceed, thank you.
Ke le bo ha ba ho lo ki le tumedi si ze ki le tholpile ka fe la.
Good day ladies and gentlemen, honourable members.
Eh, li bisoke Jane Kraki.
My name is Jane Kraki.
Eh, getsoa from a company called MJQ Harvest.
Getsoa ko company ne bi diwa MJQ Harvest.
Eh, re, a group of ladies re ba ra ro fe la, mo ne ho re re bezika, a very small scale farming eh, ereli bezika ona currently.
Re se clopa sa ba sadi ba tre, baylo hori re meka meka ne le eh, temo tu o po taana.
Eh, pozo ya ka, hasi, hasi etele alo.
I have a question and it is not long.
And my main question go hori, how will this bill address the issue ya agricultural land in urban areas? Ki, 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 ka toza fe lo horo ta eh, mayor oza ma ili, if he was here, maybe not a far clarity on that.
Pozo ya me ke hori eh, ma la chomo onu o utleho ha ama jang le fasela temo tu o komiti se toro po. I'm just concerned that the mayor has left. Probably he was the right person to come and respond to, to this question.
Le ba ka la hori ki buze pozo eke hori eh, currently I'm residing in Gahiso township.
My reason for asking this question is because I'm a, I'm currently residing in Gahiso township.
And we all know hori townships eh, hanata, land eh, le moy allocated for maybe eh, residential development and ha ho lebe le ta ta mo ta we za hori ba allocated fazi for taba za ho leima.
Re si ta ta hori, marketi ne, agiri zo hori, hoza le fasela marketi ne, agiri zo hoa, huamak. And it is not allocated mostly into agriculture.
So ne ki ba ta ke la ho iti ta ba eh, hori, how will this bill address that? Because ro naralaba tu ba du lang marketi ne, lo ro naraba ta horo si repassing, si ve available for taba za ho leima. Reska, reska, reska dependa mo ta we za horo, we have to have farms, big farms, more, more, more di areas e chana le bo Machalis.
So that, that, that is my reason for questioning because we as residents in townships, we know that we do not have adequate land for agriculture and we want to know how is this going to be affected? Since we do not want to use land eh, afar from big farms such as Machalisberg.
Ke le bo.
Thank you.
Let's understand that eh, the executive mayor did ask to be excused and he has left eh, councillor Endamase who will be attending to all the issues that are raised pertaining Mochale city.
Eh, ki ko pa horo, ra toro po wila o ko pa horo atla atza ma eh, me ho ne jano mo le ka tu la ha ho e, o kupile mo councillor Endamase horo atla ho, 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 di kanze di amanal, le so ho lo bo ho lo ma supala wa Mochale.
Dumela ba ho lo a choa ho le le ka usi?
Good day ladies and gentlemen.
Ni ma chi lo ni. Hu ye moro. Na li bisola ka ki na Caroline Thiba?
My name is Caroline Thiba.
Ba ba ho lo ba inbisore ki mo shatlam.
Those who know me call me mo shatlam.
Ni anstas ki inbisama keeru. Ma lo ba jana ba inbija ma keeru.
Others call me ma keeru.
Na, I'm the founder of Rotanganesa community here in West Rente.
Ki, ki na musi mo ludhi wa eh, bo gana zachi inbisar Rotanganesa. Rotanganesa, ki mo ka tu bi diwa odiwa ona Rotanganesa.
Wa na udila ka PLA eh, under PLA sector, each episode.
Ro naraka fata saha PLA sector, me ki na mo di la sto lo wa yo one.
Ro na es, ro na re le mo rurali, neru nyaga oze ba gava, bili eh, itlo ru tu sa yanga, re keha re le mo di plasi after ba tu ba ro na, ba rural development, ba regalo fazi, mo ba tu ne ba ma ba ba shi u.
Now, I want to know how is this bill going to assist us? Those who are living in rural areas and family land? Because eh, the, the, those who are buying farms, buy them from the owners who are the white people.
Bayile ba regalo fazga twenty fourteen, after ba regalo fazga twenty sixteen, na we government ya lo na lo na rural area, le da o toma ba regalile la range.
Now, they bought their farm in twenty fourteen and then in twenty sixteen, your government, this government eh, took us out of the farms.
Ene moro ya sogola, ene farmer eh, le ne none, inale muruo, inale di tanale za two hundred and fifty-two.
Since being evicted, we are struggling a lot because that farm eh, was rich in soil and it also had two hundred tunnels.
Ene neko na ncha milli, million mo company eh, uka beka or ga ho idina, go re sa ba regalo ma ho.
And it was eh, able to produce a million at the time that we were working with the former white people who owned that land.
Ena ho na no ya na re ba ta farmer eh, la sogola, re ba reka moyo, na re ba reka mopisi ni enyan whereby re sa garache ba mo government, because chalete mo ite mo, abarifel fazi, li, 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 so so re na mo le fazi, le rodo ba regalo don samruo.
And now we want that farm be, because right now we are working in a small eh, in, in a small area in that farm. We do not want to depend on the government. However, we want the land because we can eh, we, 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 we can manage it and plant it and, and use the, its resources.
Ene why ki wa ya locally Caroline Thiba, they present a PLA people living with HIV sector in West Rente. Re nyaga, ya di, di, di fresh fruit, cha o choa mo le fazi, ene re koro grai potenje ra it, mo, mo, West Rente.
And the reason for me to say that is because we want to eat fresh produce that comes straight from the soil and feed the people of, of Mochale fresh produce.
Ro doa o togo eh, ro na plasi, eh, la vandalize wa, ene government eh, iri le ba tu ba ma security iba ba ta la chale, eh, day by day, ene le fazi le la di tanale le di za ma ya, o snari tanale o snai ore ba re filio na na rodo ba regalo, ba ta la chale, tero doba regalo ka ma zo aru, na chalete mo mo.
And now it sends me very much that, that, that farm is basically vandalized and the government instead hires security personnel to guard that area instead of giving that, eh, eh, us that land. Because that way we can work it and farm on it.
Ke le wo ne, ko pa r government eh, ru tu se, ro le fazi le la, lerpeo, na ka re ba reka le ya ha na mara na goe la sa le ba tu ba su, ro re ba reka le bo, neru ba reka indiki ni di ka monate, le, le, le mo tu tu la la faz, ho na no le fazi le la, le cha dui le mo di la ni noa, le ma ho di, lo ru si ni wo re ko pa re ba reki ma faz, mara, ba di me eh, ba tu ba ngo ba za ma, ba li monitor, or ba li monitor li herba go na le, mo sa jo la fe la, abarifel ba willing to work, re ba re, re ko pa re ba reki sa ga ro go na di so so re ya di atsinyala, ta government eh, ra ko pa re ko pa we re.
So eh, thank you and all I'm asking is for that farm, be please give it to us. Please give, give us that farm back so that eh, we can work on it. Now it has become a den of thieves and of snakes, but if we can eh, if we can eh, go into that farm, if you can just give us that farm, we can be able to produce eh, eh, food from, from that farm.
Dumela ka fe la ka haro ho la, huntu.
Good day ladies and gentlemen.
Ki dumedi sa parlamente ka fe la.
I greet all the parliamentarians.
Li bo etele ba me mi lueng.
And everyone who has gathered here.
Ki te buke la le na hori ki be mona.
And I'm also grateful for my, for myself being here.
Ena ki farmer.
I'm a farmer.
Getsoa ko Zurbekom.
From Zurbekom.
Mo, mo Renwest.
In the Renwest municipality.
Ena ki ba ta oze hori, mo la ote o na utlo ru tu sa ka.
All I want to know, how is this bill going to help us?
Ho ba na ka le re leima.
Because we've been farming for a very long time.
Ka le re keni mo, mo di ploto, mo le re se bezza.
We've been working in the, in the, in those plots for a very long time.
Mararo na ba di ko bo di kutu ane, haru toli tu so.
But us the indigenous, we do not get assistance.
Oh, na ki Nancy Nkosi?
My name is Nancy Nkosi.
Getsoa ko Zurbekom go Renwest. Eh, ne ki ba ta o go za horo, mo la o potana o utlo ru tu sa ka, mo, mo la ote o o utlo ru tu sa ka ka obana ro na haru toli di tu so.
All I want to know is how is this bill going to be of assistance to us? Because we do not get any eh, help.
Re du la mo di ploto, na se bezza.
We live in plots and we work.
Ra leima.
We plant.
Ba ba ho na, ba ho na hori, ba, ba leme ka ma ta abona.
Those who are self-sustainable are able to plant eh, with eh, with eh, with eh, resources.
And then eh, government eh, abatu se.
However, the government still helps them.
Ro narre attenda di meeting ra za ma ya, ra leima, maru haru tu si wa, aru na di tanale, aru na di structure.
But when it comes to us, we go to community meetings and so on, but we do not get any assistance. We do not have tunnels, we do not have any resources.
Two thousand nine, two thousand and nine twenty ten, ki leka attenda agricultural school, genze poultry, genze di vegetable.
In two thousand and nine twenty ten, I attended eh, agricultural school whereby I, I learned about poultry and eh, vegetable farming.
Ki alima, ho na je di vegetables?
I plant vegetables now.
Ki leka eh, ka ezadu ku, ebeka tu ke.
I started with chickens, but then I stopped.
Ho ba na ki toli tu so.
Because I'm not getting any assistance.
Ahri le mile, frost eh, are attack, oto la o re di jalo ze na di bo la eki frost.
So when we've planted, you've got a, a challenge with frost because it, it kills eh, the, the plantation.
Ha o ho no ho reki sa, ka monu na ha na o utla reki sa ka te.
You're un, you're unable to sell the way that you thought that you'd be profiting, have you said? There is no profit.
So, li di official si za ro na, hadi ru tu si, katze la e chane tinga te.
Even our local officials do not help us in a manner that's supposed, that, that is supposed to help us.
Di e za lo ho re refe le ki ma ta, limu na di wa ti.
And they're making us to lose hope and the passion that you have for farming.
So ne ki ba ta oze ba o, mo la ote o na oduze ya.
So I want to know, how is this bill going to assist us?
Sa bo be di.
Secondly.
Re du la mo di ploto, haru na di title di, udu la oto o tu kele, ho ta ba tu ba ba fa panin, ba, ba, ba ta hori uzu e ka haro ho ploto, maru ka lo le mo.
We live in plots without title deeds, so that now we live in fear. People come and go and eh, wanting to know how do we have this farm? They want to have those plots, they want to take it out of our hands.
Eh, ene re du uzi.
And we've been in this country for a long time. And we've been working the land.
Ra lika.
We are trying our best.
Ya nu na ne ki ko pa tu so hori, eh, ki le, le consider, na le re le mo di ploto, re du si reka di le di ploto ze na maru haru na di title deed.
So we're asking for help. We've been staying in this plot, we've been guarding this plot for a very long time, yet we do not have title deeds.
Ki la fe la mo no ka le bo.
I will conclude here, thank you.
Tando ku bulisa, ngulisa na ba se parlamente.
Greetings especially to the parliamentarians.
Ki pinde futi ngulisa na ba ta ba ho na blumhla.
And also greeting the whole community at large.
Ikama la me ngo Lilieni, iswo ngo Sambo.
I am, my name is Lilian and my sister name is Sambo.
Ene ni bu ya eh, lokshin e biswa ngesonavil.
I am from the township called Sonamen.
Isonavili inga pansi go eh, Mochale city.
Sonavili is under Mochale city municipality.
Eh, mina bingke la, usizo ka ko, fu ti ko maspa la, which?
I plead for assistance especially from my municipality.
Because si omshava eslima ku, esfuaku Sonavili, ah, sina ma pe pa godwa. Si fuile ene si baningi singa ma farmer wasa Sonavili, ene si alima si baningi le onda.
Because where we stay and where we are farming, there are no proper or legal papers that allow us to, to go further with our, what we are doing in farming. And we are a number of people that you are doing farming in that area.
Eh, oka la sin e problem ye, yen komo, ne bozi.
We are having a problem about the livestock.
Imi fula esina yo, ayiko, propa ngo ba, emi niemi fula inama chemicals. Vesengatelo kuti nisneti ni ngi, ngamansi, ay, ilte kuti, incomises fuayo yo, kuzizi ve ilte masiso ti ngisela aban ya bandi nyam.
Even the rivers that we have are not good for us, especially for our livestock because other rivers are containing chemicals, so that is not good for our livestock.
So vesitela ka ko lo kuti nisisi zeni, ngentesfana na mansi, no kuti vase, abaka agriculture kuti basama kuti basala se le ka le ama plazi we to go ba, sisfagela ama plazi, sisigele and awatalanga ka le for timing. Vesitela futi na ko no kuti, jonga ba ngizwilo kuti ba ti si ko na espesi, so kuti singa ko no kuti si fu yo guzo eslime guzo, nga ti ba ngasne te, basne geza espesi esina ma title deed. Because o ko bo lewa omshava o nganapepa, nga mbela ku problem kuti, o minigazo o ko pa no magni.
We also plead for the officials from the department of agriculture to come to our place so that they are able to demarcate our farms properly. Because farming in areas that don't have the proper papers, it's really, really scaring to our lives.
Ene ma ko na futi, abale ma yo gle agriculture isku yo futi go na le Sonavili.
There are also others that are performing the farming in our area where we reside.
Vesitela ye, eh, department is, is bole ye, eh, tractor ma guza is katinso lima and eh, the tractor abas ngasbolega, no vesitelo kuti, ba nga ti si tele petrol because the most ya ma pharmacy, abasi benzine, abani nga ma penshina, abani abaka ko no kuti ba nga apoto kuti ba teni itizi or petrol. So vesitela kuti agriculture is assiste, o kuti si dime, si masisa stanelo, kuti si provide eh, o kuti da ku is.
We also request the department of agriculture to give us oporo as the tractor so that you are able to use this tractor in our farming. And also because you are not, not all of us have enough money to manage those tractors, they must help us getting the petrol for the tractors so that you are able to go with our farming forward.
Ene ma si lima, ina eslime la guzo asina ma pipe.
There are no pipes, the infrastructure is, is poor.
Ene ma kvanele stelele, is talo ze, tu kumele stola amansi nga ma bagede.
We fetch water with buckets from the rivers to the place where we want to water our plantations. We can be very grateful and happy if the government can come with assistance to us. We have a lot of livestock there, but we are short of arbiters who we can slaughter our livestock and be able to sell the products. So we are forced to sell our live livestock because we don't have the arbiters. Thank you.
Good day.
My name is Bobby Tlapu. I'm a resident and I was born in Makhalisberg. So I greet the portfolio committee. The municipal officials. As well as the community at large. I support this bill, but only seventy percent.
We've been here in rural development and agriculture for many years. First term, President Zuma, on our deal of rural development.
With President Zuma's first term, he mentioned that he's only going to deal with rural development.
But when you look at the black area from Tarleton, Headport, Makhalisberg, there's nothing reported regarding rural development. So, more billing.
Now, with regard to this bill, I want to inform you that ninety percent of the land in our area, it is agricultural land. So we are only left with ten percent and we have great needs. We need human settlements, we need malls. Because the biggest challenge with our farms, it is evictions. Our people are being evicted from Tarleton, Headport, Makhalisberg. Every day they go to court and unfortunately they lose the cases. Now, my humble plea to the portfolio committee is that please go and have a conversation with the Department of Education to bring back agriculture to be a subject in the schools. And if at all possible, let this bill force that there should be agricultural schools in place. We have black farmers in our midst in Makhalisberg.
But hundred percent they are not from rural places.
But hundred percent of them are not from rural places. Because Now, with this request for agriculture to be a subject, we also request that there should be night classes, the same as you have abet classes, which are night schools. So that because we are farmers, we have been working for a very long time and they've reached an elderly age. So if they are being taught in the night classes, just to give them the skills that they require for farming. That's where I'll conclude. Thank you.
Greetings to the members, parliamentarians. And the community at large. Especially the parliamentarians. I'm just directing my speech to them, seriously. Because in the long run.
From nineteen thirteen or so.
From nineteen thirteen. There has been no time or opportunity. For the community at large. To get the opportunity. To speak directly. With parliament. So this opportunity. And getting this opportunity. That is proper and fair to us, all of us. So that you are able to say or air our views. All our views. By so saying. I just want to speak about the title deeds. But there are those speakers previous to me. Who has just spoken about this. I do hope. That this challenge. Will get the opportunity. To be solved. Not wasting any time. My name is Temba. I think this name, you understand it. That it says. Maybe after this meeting. We'll have a chance or opportunity. As all of us. And get what we have come here for. Just a time. If it can happen. That this bill. It must not take a long time. Because it's been a very long time already. Under oppression. Lacking all the implements or the resources. We have the vision or ideas. Differently. But our challenge. Is about these things that have been mentioned. Where I'm stressing so much. Where I'm operating. Near Ranforden in Mchakeng. The name of my organization. You reap what you sow. Corporate. I think, by so saying. I just want not to belong. The resources I'm speaking about. They cause the challenge. To get what you want to get. By so saying. Speakers before me that have said something. They said it all. I don't want to continue. There will be some other items. But my wish is. Let us speak. And do something and act. Thank you.
Before the next speaker, let's correct about Dingiliswe. Says that you understand what Dingiliswe means. And therefore it doesn't mean dingiliswe. You don't translate it to dingiliswe. You translate it to, "I need land." That's what dingiliswe means. So he's standing there as dingiliswe, umto dingiliswe, person that needs land. That's what he was saying. I just wanted to be explicit in that about dingiliswe. So that we don't walk away as your parliament thinking dingiliswe is translated to dingiliswe. We understand exactly what dingiliswe means. And everyone must be on par with us on that. So we fully understand what you said here. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Mpezisseni. I'm very excited to be meeting members of parliament today. I think this is so useful for us because we now know it will help us to know where we are going and also understand what we are talking about. I come from Sonaville under the Makhali City municipality. They have fifteen years of experience in farming with pigs and goats. And livestock and cattle. So most of the time we take our livestock to auctions. What worries us is that when we get to these auctions, we find that there is differentiation on the basis of race. You find white people put their livestock on one side and black people on the other side. Some few years back, we had lots of pigs. But they all died of zoon flu. A lot of them died because of zoon flu. So at some point, government officials came and said, "Because your pigs are all infected, they're sick, it's better we..." What is the correct word? Slaughter, yes. So when they came, they promised us, they asked us to accept twenty-five rand per kg. So they gave us that money? So since then, you know, that was the end. We haven't received anything and we are struggling. So we buy feeds, but we are struggling. We can't benefit from the farming. So there are farmers with cattle, goats. We are struggling to produce, to be productive and successful farmers because we do not have feeds. So our farm can accommodate a large number of cattle, but unfortunately there is no grazing, there is no feed. We do not have water for the cattle. They drink water from the sewage, from the sewage, basically. So what we are asking from you is to help us. Come and see the situation which we find ourselves in. Come and see where we are. So that you are able to help us. So we are struggling. We do not have employment. Our hope is in farming and we want to make a living out of farming, but we are struggling. At some point, we asked government to provide us with a bohole. Indeed, the bohole was brought to us. But when they responded, they didn't do what we asked them to do. So they gave us a bohole, they sank a bohole where all the livestock, cattle, goats and everything will come and drink from the same place. And you know, that's a big problem because if all of them are drinking from the same point, so it means the cow that is infected comes and drinks from the same point with the healthy ones. And what happens after that? It's infection to all the livestock. It's very difficult to do farming, you know, all the medicines and injections, all these things are very expensive. Please, honorable members, come and help us. Come and see where we are so that you can help us.
Greetings, everybody. I will say my greetings, one at a time, to you and then to the house at large. My name is Anna Yende. I am a supervisor of a TWP. So I want to say that it's for the first time I set my eyes upon parliamentary members since I was born and living here in Makhalisberg. So the truth is, I only see you on TV. So now I'm having this hope that changes will then happen here in Makhalisberg. So we have a land in Wattheti Two in Zalopele. So it is actually called TPA. So it is actually called TPA.
CPA.
It's C, CPA.
So CPA urimoyo one ra planta rinali cooperative.
So in this CPA, we plant and then we have a cooperative.
But the problem arina title deed.
So the problem is that we don't have a title deed.
So rinali koho lady food garden, lady homu lady kolove.
So we have chickens, we have fertilizers, we have pigs, we have cattle.
Jakan nagale anage nali di homu lady kolove.
So I own cattle, I own pigs.
Ki onale cooperative ya liho.
Also, I mean poultry, I own the cooperative thereof.
Pa di chenchisidi te dile ndirela hori mola owa masbalaware hole niwa di stene zarona.
But then the change that actually took place is that there is a lot from the municipality where they say that our stands are going to be lined up.
Horo horo tala di say this.
So that we can easily receive our services.
So mogi dula nteki dula lady kolove about three meters of hoganamo di kolove nukugeye di kolove ki.
So where I live, I live with pigs. Literally, it is three mi- meters from where I'm staying and here they are.
So kabona hori hamasbalo say na kidi regis.
Then when this municipality by law came, I decided I'm going to sell them.
So kidi regis ito go auction.
So I auctioned them.
Now kesele di cow, the same three meters.
So now I'm left with cattle and it's the same situation, three meters from my house.
Pa tuan kisha ba mapawa masbal.
But now when I actually scrutinize the municipality map.
Mogi beile di homu zaga bariki open space ya masbal.
So now where my cattle resides is referred to as the municipality's open space.
So haki tlalohanya horo horela horo lenano tlalohanya gen tu to re kidi regis.
So now I don't know what does this mean, but the idea that comes up in my mind is then it means I must also sell them.
Ka hori bridula momi kukung.
Because we live in shenti houses.
We need RDP.
We need RDP houses.
So nu filahore laronar.
We don't feel as other people.
So mori bona hori township eraite forona because rabatlo payakaba tuba ba modi party.
That's why we feel that it could be good for us and we want to look good like other people.
Kika mori regisandi.
So that is why we are selling our livestock.
Ah, so you zedi ngat.
So there is a lot, actually.
CWP analysis food secret.
CWP has food security.
Retusa basadi baholo.
We are helping the old women.
Banava school.
School-going kids.
Le ba tuba baluala.
And those who are sick.
But the problem harana mezi.
But then the problem is we have no water.
Renka mezi about maybe eighty meters.
So you have to walk about eighty meters just to go and draw water.
So seso holo holo se kesase ujisi sansen klemobile.
But the main thing which I didn't understand so well in the bill.
More hot thirty-one, thirty-two.
So in Watte thirty-one and thirty-two.
Why ronarasana she neli di njule di, di kwanele batu.
Why don't we townships, we don't have yards, houses that we can be like other people?
And then banava ro na ma grade twelve.
So our kids, those who have done grade twelve.
Habana o west kola habana college.
So.
Habana di college ita koya koji.
They don't have colleges that we, which they could attend.
So banava ro na ba beraka nte tewana le ro.
So they basically are doing exactly what we are doing, work wise.
Make ma grade twelve but haba tushinik seka hori na hori na koba kayan.
So they are grade twelve graduates, but there is no way in which they can help. They've got nowhere to go.
Rohopela di college, rohopela di hollow, atama talo.
So we are requesting that we have colleges and also the halls. So that's all that I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So zamah is course of food. Eh, moluli.
Greetings.
Eh, ngbonisili onke na ba vagashbeet wa ba ze keltkala lik.
Greeting the house at large and all the guests that are here.
Eh, nanlibuya esuaneville nam.
I'm from Suaneville.
Eh, ikamalamu Rainet Matros.
My name is Rainet Matros.
Eh, angzo bamte kakulu.
I won't be long.
Gobi Suaneville ine ngaki.
Suaneville has problems, challenges.
Eh, ngaki eh zamafama zinguru.
A lot of challenges concerning farming.
We, bayalusa aban aba famai.
People, farmers are losing a lot.
Because akuna structure eseraito zokwenzi farming.
There is no proper structure to farm there.
Eh, especially lama farmer manana wasakulayo.
Especially the emerging farmers.
Eh, dimvile umeya etetangi harmony.
I heard the mayor speak about the harmony project.
There is project ibla apa esuaneville.
It's in Suaneville.
Apo tunnels afagwe harmony.
There are tunnels that have been put by harmony.
Irrigation systems zikona pa.
There is irrigation system there.
But abando abachala around Suaneville.
But people around Suaneville who are residing around Suaneville.
They are no, yo, slowani, eh, akuna lele right yungena pagati yoli ma.
There is no proper access to get there in order to practice farming.
Again, do siensley.
What we did.
Si pumile gapali kwe Suaneville.
We went out of Suaneville, Sanneville.
Sayo chonga ama kampa ama kul.
To look for big companies.
Sa kaya la isanzo soguti adoptani ama farmers amangan asesuaneville.
And we requested them to adopt these emerging farmers from Sanneville.
Gobi asikatele ildal.
We are tired of starving.
Sa tibana de company shoi majestic soya and oil producers eh la esek Krugasdorf.
And the company called.
Majestic.
Majestic.
Soya and.
Soya and.
Oil producers.
Producers. That is the company that we met and spoke to it.
Eh, because the money opportunity especially for oboma ma nabandoana ukitaba limele matenge direct kubo.
They are able to layers with women and they are able to buy the products from them.
And then saza kumaspaala sa apply la ukitismaninda angoba ba funa gulima, si funugulima in a large, in the way good.
We also went to the municipality to request for the bigger space to farm.
But until today, from twenty eighteen until today, asna ansa eh application yeti yambenjani asazi akuna feedback.
There's been no feedback or response from the municipality from twenty eighteen up to this date.
Sea funu adopta i billi.
We want to adopt this bill.
But i worry it to kutizo seven zela na.
But you are worried as to what is maybe, is it going to work for us?
It's geta na apa.
Ah, that's where I end. Thank you.
Um, dumelang baholo.
Greetings, honorables.
Ki dumediseyadi tuloka hola telana hatzoni.
And then my greetings to all of you.
Ah, libito ki sina wakokota.
And my name is Sina Kokota.
Ki secretary of province eh women in agriculture and rural development.
So I'm the secretary of, in the province of the women in agriculture.
And rural development.
And rural development.
Um, ki lewuchele kureli fili le mama Mahalisberg.
I'm very grateful for your presence here in Mahalisberg.
Kaki muduluwa mama Mahalis.
Because I'm a resident here.
Ki tomile dilotsa timo ka two thousand and eight.
I started farming in two thousand and eight.
Kele a young person.
And I was a young person then.
And negeli coordinator ya western day youth in agriculture and rural development.
So I was a coordinator by then of youth in agriculture and rural development.
And koting urinirubuak antuewani.
So there we spoke about one thing.
Le fatse.
The land.
And hori ronar lebacha.
Eh, the point was we as young people.
Re enajwang motzati mo.
So how do we actually find our place into agriculture?
Re lwanne jawalo.
So we actually struggled along.
Hufilaki we ken na.
Up to me growing up to being a young woman.
Kenseki le motzati mo.
And still in agriculture.
Rinse re lwanajwa.
And still struggling along.
Bomme ba thokama fatse.
Women are in need of land.
Bomme basibeet.
And women are working.
Bomme balibeki ti makeup.
Eh, bomme put on, they wear their makeup.
By libes.
Or they no longer actually concentrate on their makeup.
Ra ra fara makeupa hara tokopa naliluna.
So we only wear our makeup when we know we're gonna meet you guys.
Because okarha tente makeupu utwala hantla danha lumu putu.
Because it seems like when we are wearing makeup, then you're gonna get a better understanding of us than when we are not wearing it.
Exactly. So ya kaki hori, bili ya agriculture, libili ya firefelt, ilonya lanajwa.
So my point, my question here is how is there going to be a merge between the land bill and the fire bill?
Ning bomme basuteng ba lili thronolo ba lady plasing.
Because women who are fortunate right now to be having farms.
Banali challenge ya di firefelt.
Are experiencing fire challenges.
Ka obaning di informal settlement di how lady plasis abo.
Because the friends are actually veered to their.
Eneko kasi empowerment bari etan di chisanyama horo lho no hui piri sa.
And then in kasi, in the township, they say, do some chisanyama so that you can be able to make ends meet.
Impafala haba kato cholan thotza wene.
Fire gravitate to the women's farms.
Ki abili eyo.
So that is point number one.
Yabo beedi.
Then number two.
Rineru ko pi hori, di plasi zedi lenteng, zedi nedireki wiki governmente. Displeti we hori ahono accommodata bomme.
We requested that some of the farms which had been purchased by the government must be demarcated so that they can actually be some of them.
Ba yone eh ya or bomme bararelema on the open spaces kodi komationing impafala di services. Hari degree because of these water challenges, honale challenge ya bushudu, honali challenge zengad, asunere bilivor. Harile modi plasin zeto zidireki nke government, things that are.
Because the women actually have made us point that when they are in the township, they try to farm in some of the open spaces. But now the challenge that comes upon with that is that they will have water challenges and thylury actually happens as well. There are quite a lot of problems along that lines. That is why they thought it would be better if they could do this in some of those farms that were purchased by the government.
Then ebena challenge ya the water rights.
And then the other challenge then comes to be the challenge of water, water rates.
Rights.
Water rights.
Because honali direct tapes zengad.
Because honali melawana eh iminze sakokehe.
Literally that thing you go do.
And the payment for those is very high.
So nirukopalfoten hori hari amend the bill.
So now our quest is that as we are amending the bill.
Rechebe nte tute di jawa.
So we must please consider these matters.
Then.
Memory ho hamo.
Ebere na hori rukopa hori, di plasis arona, mama Mahalis, we've got lot of farms.
So we will request because the thing is we've got lot of farms here in Mahalis.
Diarekiwa ke kopaho sabe xenophobiciskeka ate kiwa, gutu alehand.
So they are being bought, the point that I'm going to make, please don't think that I sound xenophobic. I just want you to have a clear understanding of my statement.
Our brothers and sisters from other countries.